Good morning, everybody. It's 10:00 AM on July 28, 2020. This is Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. We're originating our meeting from the administration building. And I get my call meeting to order and ask if you'd join us here to the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We are providing access to the meeting, public access, through utilizing Zoom. And that's because of the continued COVID-19 pandemic and our need to social distance help spread, help slow the spread of the virus. I would entertain a motion for adoption of today's agenda. Oh, excuse me. Thank you. Excuse me. I was just reminded, under additional items, 14 on the agenda, we're going to remove item one. The county attorney is going to reschedule that at a later date. So I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with removing item one under additional items.
I would so move second.
Olson?
Aye.
Hens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda is adopted. Next updates on COVID-19. Any updates from staff? And if you have an update and you're on the call, please unmute yourself now. I'll wait a second. Hearing nobody there. I've seen nobody in the room. Any updates from the supervisors?
The only thing that I have, looking at the information as of 9:45 this morning, it looks like statewide, there were five new deaths, 253 new cases. And that Story County had 10 new cases. And the same amount are hospitalized as of yesterday, which would be seven people hospitalized. No additional deaths in Story County. And again, that's as of 9:45 this morning.
Thank you. Any other updates? Okay, if not, we'll go into public comment number one. Comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. So open the public comment session. And if there's anybody on the call who wanted to make a public comment on anything on the agenda, please unmute yourself now. Nothing on the text. Okay. So we will close public comment session and go on to item eight, discussion and consideration items brought before the board with request for immediate action. We have none. Number nine is agency reports. We have one from Veterans Affairs. Brett McLean, are you on the phone? Yes, you are. Do you have anything that you want to add to your written report you submitted? Or so you can unmute yourself? 20 seconds. No, he's not muted.
Volume?
Volume.
Can't hear you, Brett.
Just a second, Brett. Would you talk now, see if he can hear you? Brett, we're not hearing you at all.
Okay, just a minute.
Now we can hear you.
I don't have any, I don't have anything else. Wonder why that's not working?
Did you say you don't have anything additional from your written report?
Yes, I don't have anything additional from my written report, unless the board has any questions for me.
Okay, board, do you have any questions for Brett?
I do not.
I do not. We don't. And thank you very much for your report. We appreciate it and the good work that you're continuing to do with veterans and surviving spouses during this difficult time. So thank you. And thank you particularly for being willing to attempt visits in nursing homes through the glass. I think that would be very, very appropriate and very appreciated by veterans. So thank you, Brett. Next, we go to juvenile court annual report. Do you have anybody on the phone? I don't see Jerome on the phone or on the Zoom call. Does anybody see him?
Actually, I think he's on vacation.
Okay. Then we don't have any.
I don't see Sherry or Shirley either.
Okay. Okay, so we have a written report. So we'll go on then to consideration of minutes. We have minutes from the July 21 meeting. I'm going to entertain a motion.
I approve approval of the July 1 minute.
Second. Okay, Hens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Minutes are approved. Next consideration of personnel actions. Would entertain a motion to approve personnel actions as presented.
So move second.
Olson?
Aye.
Hens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions are approved. Next, we'll go to consent agenda. Was there anything anybody wanted to pull?
Yes, I'd like to pull 12, item 10, under consent agenda.
Item 10, acknowledging and signature of Board Supervisor Chair and approving a special custody license for 20 acres campground.
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda accepting item 10?
Salute. Except item 10. Second.
Hens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved. Okay, item 10.
I just wanted to pull it just to make note that this is atypical, but certainly, given the circumstances, it was, the state did not respond for something that they need. And this is an annual event. So I think it was totally appropriate. I know we tried not to do this to pre, to sign up after the fact on anything. But I just want to make note of that. And with that, I'll move approval of it.
Second.
Okay. I would just make the comment that I did ask the owner to give us a written statement saying he would abide by the governor's proclamation on the COVID-19 restrictions, and we got that on file.
Excellent. Thank you.
So let's see. Was your motion?
It was.
Olson?
Aye.
Hens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Item 10 is approved. We will go on then to additional public hearing items, of which there are none. Then to additional items, number one will be later. So item two, discussion and consideration of Cyclones Care Campaign. LeAnn Harder. Morning, LeAnn.
Good morning.
You see Susan Boyaz is on too. Good morning, Susan, from the City of Ames.
Good morning. I did prepare a memo for the board's action this morning. As the board knows, Iowa State University, in preparation for students returning, well, they are starting right now, but students returning to return to school in August has developed the Cyclones Care Campaign. And they did share materials with public information officers from throughout Story County, everywhere from City of Ames, obviously Story County, since I'm here, McFarland Clinic, Mary Greeley, a variety of different entities. That Cyclones Care Campaign does really primarily focus around four pillars of healthy behavior. Those are aware face covering, maintain physical distancing of six feet or greater, wash, sanitize your hands frequently, and stay home if you're sick. So then, the entire campaign is online. I think I did share that website with the board. So Iowa State is making that campaign available for all these entities. It includes posters, signage, social media posts. You'll see, if you want this, do this. Some behavior modification, social media posts. I'm glad to see Susan's on the Zoom call too, because she did reach out to me last week then, in the following week as well as follow-up to a meeting we'd had the week prior, asking for input from all these different entities on three items. And I'm specifically here regarding Story County, obviously. It's to promote the campaign, the Cyclones Cares Campaign, a coordinated fashion throughout Story County. These three areas are paid advertising, so they're looking at bus boards, print ads, radio, other means of advertising, using communication tools that you have as an entity. We obviously don't have billboards, but using newsletters, emails, email lists and such, websites. And then just in general, sharing that message of Cyclones Care, addressing those four pillars of healthy behavior. So why I'm here today is, one, to address those three areas. But specifically, Susan did request that Story County provide financial contribution towards that effort. I did share the link to the council action forms as being considered by the Ames City Council tonight. And as you saw, Susan is on the Zoom as well, and I can go unmute her as needed. I know Ames is on the council action form as Ames City Manager is recommending $10,000. The Ames Chamber of Commerce did $5,000. I don't know beyond that what's been, and Iowa State University is $10,000. I did know earlier this summer, the board did allocate $1,500 for court reopening. And in speaking with, just lost his name, the communications director, they did not, the courts did not want to do radio advertising. Instead, they wanted to look at, and they don't have Facebook, they have just Twitter, want to look at Story County, if we did paid advertising using our Facebook and boosting the posts by paying for that. So that, that funding is still available though. Long story short, that $1,500 is still available. We're doing some revisions to the Facebook page. And would like to consider doing that possibly, but I've not, I don't have a recommendation on that regarding Facebook at this point. But that entire $1,500 is not, none has been spent. I did share the campaign that the Ames Chamber of Commerce is doing. They have a whole Welcome Home ISU Students. That's why I handed out right as I came up here. They are using the same coloring scheme, if you look on pages two and three. Not entirely adopting the Cyclones Care Campaign. They're promoting it, but they have their own campaign as well too. But they're still trying to coordinate with the entire Cyclones Care Campaign. So it seems like there's a momentum to go to a coordinated campaign messaging, but still having it specific to the jurisdiction as well. So the request today is for the board to financially contribute towards the overall outreach campaign. And if Susan does have anything to add, I can unmute her and add her in. That would, we'd have the Story County logo on all the materials, you know, the bus boards, whatever information is out there, all the jurisdictions that would contribute financially. There's a lot to that. Are there questions for me?
There are several for me, but I'll give the other two a chance to go first. I asked a lot.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. So first of all, you said that we don't have billboards. I don't understand. We have billboards. We have billboards out in the country too. Are we saying that the coordinated campaign has opted not to purchase any billboards?
Story County does not own billboards.
Okay, that's what you, all right. Thank you.
But we own.
Okay, second of all, you know, I, I'm interested personally, this is more of a statement, I'm interested in getting the message of those four tips out, okay, about wear a mask, wash your hands, stay home, you know, social distance, okay? This Welcome Home Students Campaign in Ames Chamber says none of that on any of their, their items. So any money that I'm interested maybe in voting for, at least as one member here, is would not, I would specifically not want to go to support this campaign because I feel our emphasis needs to be on messaging to people about staying safe. Okay? And then my third question, or maybe semi-question comment, has to do with you coordinating with the court system. We just want to probably let Bethany, Judge Bethany Curry know, because she's the one who really had asked about us getting the message out. And so if there's going to be a limit, and she, you know, she was hoping it would be more robust, that we not spend any of that $1,500. Certainly, we're not taking any from that campaign and move it over, given that the full courts aren't opening until September 13th or whatever. We don't know what changes they may need. So those are my three kind of questions and comments. Okay. Thanks.
So the way I'm understanding this is these ads, and what you just handed us, the ones the chambers.
That's the chamber.
Yep. Not specifically. The ones that we would be asked to contribute to.
And it might be, Susan might be able to add some additional information to that as well.
Okay. That's, thank you. That helps to clarify that one. Supervisor Hens, do you have questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. So Ken was off on the, what the chamber had listed here. Are you looking at them developing some sort of whatever, post-its or cut-out logo or whatever around the four pillars that are specific to Story County? That's in coordination with Cyclone Cares? Or is it more of, let's just contribute to Cyclone Care?
The latter part.
Okay.
Unless the board says we want to revisit our signage and some of our messaging that we've already developed and has been approved by the board to incorporate that Cyclones Care, whether that sigh with the mask, whatever that may look like. But today, the question is, because they do want to start on the larger bus boards campaign and all that, whether or not the board, that's an element of it. But the larger question is whether or not you want to financially contribute.
And I guess like one other question would be, have you also reached out to the Board of Health? They are having a meeting next Tuesday, and I didn't know if you would.
And I cannot remember if Les White was on that call or not. I'd have to go back and look.
They don't have any money though.
No, I know, I know. But I just, we answered, you've just gotten their internal thoughts as well. And I said they have a meeting next Tuesday, and so I just didn't know if you had reached out to.
Any responses to Lisa have brought up a couple more things that I'll give Supervisor Merkin a chance.
Right.
Okay. So first of all, as I understood this, that on that Cyclone Cares message, that we could take that message and we could change the colors on it, right? Or is that, and then we could put our logo on the bottom, or we could take off the Cyclone Cares and still take that basic messaging and do things that we could distribute throughout the remaining communities in addition to Ames. Is that still?
That was my initial understanding. Let me unmute Susan.
Good. And I have another follow-up question.
Because I think she has the in-design files and that.
Okay.
To do the, the initial conversations we had was that she would be, City of Ames would be doing that element of it.
City of Ames would be doing that for the City of Ames, right?
No. The way it was.
Let me get Susan on here, because it was not how I understood it.
Yeah, let me switch.
I see a smile.
I see a smile.
Good morning.
Hi. Susan, we can hear you.
Yes. Yes. So our original discussions with communicators was about adapting the Cyclone Cares Campaign and branding it with our own organizational colors and look. In discussing it further, we decided that would dilute the message. Instead, we want to focus on the idea that 30,000 students on campus and then dispersing throughout the cities and county of Story County would see a similar message wherever they went. So it is Cyclones Care with sigh, with the Cardinal in gold, with our logos included on that. And so that was, it was a very robust discussion, and there were different points of view on it. But ultimately, we all decided that that consistency was the most important.
Okay, I appreciate that. That's pretty important to me because I have a dollar figure in mind. But if we're not going to be allowed to do a separate reach out, at least under Cyclone Cares, you know, like branded more for the county and adults in the county, my number is split now about where I would want to see somebody spend, okay? But we still can use the four pillars, right? We just can't.
Absolutely. The four pillars are what everybody is buying into. There was 100% agreement that those were all something that the school district, that Mary Greeley, that McFarland, that the League of Women Voters, Heartland Senior Services just came on. Those four pillars are critical to the message. That is the message. And at the bottom of that message, you'll see the Iowa State University logo, and then you'll see Story County, or Mary Greeley, or McFarland, or City of Ames. That is co-branded. But what catches your attention, what catches your eye, is the Cyclone connection. So that Cardinal in gold is what catches your eye, sigh, those four pillars. And then the co-branding, showing that we are walking hand in hand with the university on this, that what's good for the campus community is good for the Story County community.
Well, this is Linda, and I just don't think there'd be a problem of using that. If you've got something already, an image with the four pillars and the logos, and if we contribute to this, it will include the Story County logo.
Yep, absolutely.
Everybody's logo, right? Because I'm thinking a bus ad.
So the bus ads, we did a mock-up across the bottom. As the mayor had said at the last council meeting, he would love to see a whole bunch of logos across the bottom showing that cross collaboration. So at this point, we're actually getting a little worried. I think we have six or seven people that are on board, and so the bus board is filling.
So worried, I think, then you're going to have to set priorities about who should the message come from? And who are you just bringing on that may be private agencies?
I'm a little worried that the logos are going to get smaller. So.
Yeah, I understand what you're worried about. So, so feedback on that is that, is it better for it to be the government entities and ISU who's promoting that? Or it start to be, like you say, you're bringing on different nonprofit entities on that? And where do you draw the line? Okay?
I think that timing will draw the line, because we have to get going on this. And so at a certain point, it will be whoever is on board by this time. So we're almost.
When I hear Heartland's on, I mean, I kind of think, geez, who else maybe wanted to get on this? What was the criteria of bringing Heartland Senior Services on?
So Heartland had heard about the campaign and said, we are one of the most, we represent one of the most vulnerable populations as to why you would do these pillars, and we feel that it's important in our mission. Same with the League of Women Voters. They actually sought us out because they are very committed to this messaging and feel that it is extremely important that everybody in the county understand their role.
So please listen again, to the city, excuse me, Iowa State, Heartland, League of Women Voters.
Chamber of Commerce, Mary Greeley Medical Center. Those are the financial contributions. As for people who have just signed on and had said, we are in alignment with the message and we will help you promote it, that's North Grand Mall, Ames Community School District, Ames History Museum. What I'm giving you, the first list, were people who have actually said, we will financially contribute to this campaign because we want our logo on it. There's a larger group of people who said, we are going to push the message out, but for every reason, we're not going to be able to contribute.
So back to, so once again, the people who are contributing are pretty much the government entities. You've got the City of Ames, you've got Mary Greeley, you have ISU. Okay, I consider them a government entity, all right? And then.
The chamber.
Well, the chamber's not a government entity, okay?
Financial contributors.
Okay. And then, and then who else? Possibly the county, right? That's what we're talking about.
The county, the league. The league has said that they would try to contribute, and Heartland has asked about contributing as well.
Okay. So you still have an opportunity to say, hey, from a logo standpoint, people who are giving significant money, maybe we'll stay with the government-connected entities. You still have that option, right, Susan?
Yeah. I mean, I think at this point, we don't have, I think at this point, with all those mentioned, we can get them all on.
Okay. Just seems, yeah, you're right, they're small. They're going to, you know, they're small.
And it is about inclusion. It is, it looks good to have cross-county representation from all these entities that say, yes, we support this message. So the idea to be inclusive.
Will that be on posters then too?
So, yeah. We're still formulating the plan at this point. We need to get moving on bus boards to get them up and, and on the board, on the buses when students are back in town. So that needs to happen first. The university is working a billboard angle to see when they could even get on a billboard, which is going to take a while. And then other things move much faster. It's obviously much quicker to get print ads put out. Social media, both paid and unpaid, is fast. But some of these things take a little more planning, and so at some point, we just have to move with what we have.
Well, it seems to me, this is Linda again, it seems to me that if we're wanting to move quickly, perhaps we should go with what we have rather than try to do yet more materials. And you're saying pillars are included on the poster that you're working on, and all of the logos will be included. See, here's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking about the smaller communities. And we've had some calls with mayors of the small communities, and they're really wanting to continue to promote face coverings, white face coverings in their towns. So I think having all of those things on the poster is really important as opposed to the ones, I mean, the chamber's got some, they've got a whole variety. I think we need one with the, with four pillars. I personally have no problem in having all the logos on it that go out. I don't think we need to have a specialized one for Story County in order to contribute. I think you're right with the uniformity issue, as long as we've got our message in there.
My biggest concern with the chamber one, or, you know, the separate chamber one, is that when merchants and businesses, okay, are posting, there's only so much wall space. I noticed that when I locked in our, our building this morning, and there was only so much glass space to put stuff on. And I'm concerned that the chain, that this chamber one that they launched out on, apparently their own or just with ISU, is going to get in the way of the message that we're interested in paying for, or at least I'm interested in paying for. I'm interested in paying for, wear a mask, wash your hands, social distance, and stay home if you're sick.
The chamber's going to do these, they're done, correct?
Yes. But, but my point is, is that, yeah, is that these, and the chambers now, because I know that, that they were looking for people to deliver some of these already. I'll call it out to chamber board members and AEDC board members. My concern is, is this actually can get, could get in the way of the coordinated campaign. But you don't have anything to do with that.
I was going to say, maybe you'd want to tell Dan.
I'm planning on to afterwards. This is the first I've seen of that. Okay? I just, we heard about it just recently or whatever. I was disappointed to hear that ISU had a, the chamber were doing something separate. So anyway, so that's where I, that's where I'd like to see Story County with emphasis, put its money and its logo on regardless of how many logos there are, whatever, I agree. Yeah. Is that, that we want that message out. This Welcome Home stuff, I'm concerned is going to get in the way of our message. And I will convey that with Mr. Cunningham later. It's too late, obviously, but that should have been, yeah. That was real news to us on the jurisdictional meeting, the Thursday night jurisdictional meeting, where we got told about it a week and a half or two weeks ago. We went, what? So anyway, but that's just little feedback for you. Okay.
I know. I agree. That's kind of dilute the messaging when you're trying to be coordinated and someone's gone off on their own. I guess one, one addition of question, and we don't have any control.
Right, we don't.
So it's related to this, Susan. I have one last question for you. So if you make posters or whatever with those four pillars, so are there going to be like some available that we can then take out to the small communities? I mean, like, do you have a staff, like, at your office that we can say, these want to pick up 10, you know, take, put in? "These want to pick up tender," you know, take, put in each of the communities? Or are they just going to be emailed out? Or how are these going to be put out so that we can put it out in those local communities?
A couple months ago, we had some other materials that we sent out, and we gave them to the sheriff's conference because we have contract law enforcement with all of our smaller communities. We have deputies going there. And the sheriff was very willing to help distribute those. So if you got some to us, we could ask the sheriff again to help distribute posters to the smaller communities.
So, yeah, that's, that's already happened. The files are out there. They're, we even co-branded them with your logo, and they've been made. With the four pillars.
And Leanne can take care of printing those, getting those printed, and then we'll take care of logistics from her.
Sure, you could print them, you could email them out to whoever wants them. Iowa State has been, I mean, it's basically open source. This is unprecedented in its flexibility and versatility. Iowa State is designing the stuff and shooting it out. We've been helping some of the organizations by putting their logos on stuff and shooting them out to people, saying, hey, this is a, this is how it could look, get this out to whoever needs it, and run with it.
And we have a phone call, we can talk about this, and Thursday night, but some of the smaller communities have part-time city clerks, and they've had their offices closed, and their libraries are closed. So they may be, some may be limited right now. We could do both. We could make up a few posters, perhaps, Leanne, and we're going to do. And we could also send out the envision, in case they, see if they have the capabilities. They might put it in newsletters.
And they might get it on there, all on Facebook.
Certainly. So we can do both of those, to make sure we've got it covered.
We can take care of that, then.
Okay, that works for us, then. Thank you. So money-wise, I'll just throw out, I had an amount, not knowing that Mary Greeley was on, I think, also, I just had added up 15,000 so far. The 10,000 from the city, the 5,000 from the Chamber. I guess now there's 10,000 committed from ISU, so that's 25,000, okay? So, and then we said Mary Greeley's going to chip in, et cetera. What is your total budget, Susan?
Well, that's a good question. The total budget was the 25,000, and then whatever else people wanted to contribute just means we can purchase more.
Okay, so you've got the 25, your basic budget covered.
Yep, yes.
The number I had in my mind was $5,000 because I felt this was so important. That is before I knew about how robust then this welcome home campaign was and the fact that we would be producing things out in the county ourselves. Starting just at that kind of 5,000, then number would still be, we'd need to pull some back for us, or what we feel we would need, and then give some there. But if you think that's too high or not enough, but...
I guess my question would be, so 5,000, because I'm trying to think, if we're going to do some printing in-house, is it going to be in-house cost to it? And so is that excluding the in-house, I guess I just want to know a little bit more. So are you saying 1,500 to the coordination, and then...
Yeah, 3,500 or whatever, however we split that 5,000. Yes, that's exactly what I'm saying.
So I don't know if that's too much. I don't know whether it's...
I thought we can't hear you. Sorry. The paper would be the biggest cost. We would, we would do everything in-house as far as our copy costs. We have good contracts with Marco, so the actual cost to produce those would be somewhat minimal.
Okay, now, if we wanted to get them laminated, that would be an extra cost. See, I'm picking up the libraries, when the library's open, you know, I'm thinking a little more robust distribution. The other question, now back to Susan, has to do with putting them out, like, on Hurda buses out, you know, okay? Also, if other types of, like, paid advertising outside of the Tribune and the Daily, I assume those are the two you have listed. What about the Nevada Journal and the Story County, et cetera? In other words, the Weeklys, that's, are we going to have to look at picking that up so that'd be on our side of a split? Or would you guys be placing that as an ad together for hopefully a better buy cost?
Yeah, I think it would make more sense to buy at once. So I had not figured that, Ann. That's a good point. That would be something to consider when you're deciding what kind of buy-in.
So that's really what we've got, is the split, you know? Where, so yes, I was thinking that 5,000 would be total. And then now with the kind of this consideration about where would the split be? Because we have certain uses, so it's kind of up to, do we, yeah, do that? I agree with Susan. We'll get a better cost on a newspaper buy that covers everybody. Since they're all owned by the state company, except for the Daily. But, see, we feel like, you know, our part kind of gets pushed, not as emphasized. Everybody's thinking, because the students are coming to Iowa State innings, and everybody forgets about us, all right? And so we want to tag on or coordinate where we can. So what do we think? We do that. We will have some costs in-house for printing, laminating, et cetera. So, I don't know, maybe looking at 3,000 for the joint effort. And then we'll take care of additional distribution of our copies throughout the county.
I like that. Yeah, that's on three, you're welcome. And, you know, there's nothing to say if there's more that we need to do that can't be brought back for us.
Exactly, right.
But I do like the idea of coordinated, of having that one message and showing the diversity of organizations that are together, saying this is important, and this is our recommendations.
I have you up this motion.
Oh, me? So, oh, sorry. So I make the motion that we contribute $3,000 with, is it half going? No, just $3,000 towards the Cyclone Cares campaign that will also include Story County in their distribution and with the logo. I will second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Edmonds?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. And Susan, I think you did hear that if this continues on and there's additional needs for funding, we would be interested in hearing about that. Is that okay?
Thank you. I appreciate your support of this project. It needs this kind of community-wide collaboration and county-wide collaboration to be successful.
Okay, I agree. Not all students live in Ames, some live throughout the county. So however, we can reach out to all students, no matter where they live. Some in Story County is a consistent message we want to do.
Susan, thanks for joining us. Thanks for all the work you're doing on this.
Thank you.
Leanne, thank you for the work you're doing on this as well, representing our sons. Next, we will go to discussion and consideration of drafting a letter to DOT from the board to give comments on interchange options on Highway 30 near Nevada. And Jared Moon, you're on the call, and it looks like you're muted. Good morning.
Morning. I wanted to get this in front of the board, get some feedback, and see if the board wanted to submit a letter to the DOT. But first, let me go back to the very beginning on how this all got started, maybe 10 years ago or so. It all started with some safety concerns about the intersection of Highway 30 and S-14. For a number of years, the DOT threw around some interchange options and negotiated with City Nevada. They couldn't come to a real good conclusion on which one was best. And during those years, over at 580th or Cornerstone Church area, that intersection quickly kind of became the safety issue, even over S-14. So the DOT does have an interchange plan at 580th currently in the five-year program, and they kind of dropped everything else closer to Nevada for the time being out of their program. The last program that was just updated by the DOT included a bridge over Highway 30 at S-14, so that was a new addition. So what the DOT wants right now is some input on that bridge over Highway 30. The way it's currently designed, it has no ramps, it's just an overpass. So you could not get onto Highway 30 at that point. If they were to put ramps there in the future, it would require a longer bridge over Highway 30. So that's why they want feedback right now to see if they should build that longer bridge for a possible interchange at 6th instead of over at Airport Road. We've had some feedback from some Nevada city members and public from Nevada. They had a city council meeting last night. I was not able to watch that, but just looking at the agenda today, it appears, the way they had it in their agenda, the preferred alternative from the City of Nevada was the one I put in the agenda. It shows the overpass at 6th without ramps, and the interchange would go at Airport Road. That kind of goes against what some of the members that have been coming into the board have been talking about. I think there's a push to get the interchange at 6th to create better access to downtown Nevada. I don't know if any of those members are on the call here that want to speak to this, but from the county's perspective, one of the things we're most concerned about is what happens at 600th Avenue. We just paved that a few years ago, north of Highway 30. And it appears almost all alternatives at this point from the DOT close that access to Highway 30, so that would not be good investment since we just paved that road. Now, the 6th, the 6th Street Alternatives, from a county perspective, the one that's shown has no access to Highway 30. The interim plan right now that the DOT is showing, they show the bridge over Highway 30 at 6th, but no ramps. But where it connects into the 6th Street just north of Highway 30, the new plan shows some ramps right there. So 6th Street would not be closed off of Highway 30, so you could still get on Highway 30. So you'd still have access to Highway 30 in the interim until the future interchanges were built. Now, from my perspective, that would take some pressure. I'm concerned about South S Avenue, just a mile south of here. If we close off access to Highway 30 on S-14, South S is going to get a lot more traffic, and that's a gravel road right now. So that would put a lot of pressure on to pave that road, and then...
Mary, you lost me. If you wouldn't mind going back here just a little bit. The map you sent us, is that the current alternative? It doesn't look like it then, because it looks like there's X's on 6th and Highway 30.
Correct. This is the old alternative. The new one is just a little bit of an update. Really, the only difference is they have some ramps there. Not really ramps, they're just access points onto 6th Street. We could go either direction and keep 6th Street open.
Not from S-14, as is shown on this map. They're showing...
Yeah, it, north of Highway 30 is where they show, where it connects in that curve into 6th Street. They have a little ramp that takes you down to 6th Street, and they leave 6th Street connection open to Highway 30. That's just for an interim.
As an interim. So then what we were talking about, the pressure on which one of our streets or roads?
Yeah, South S Avenue, straight mile south of here. It's a one-mile stretch of gravel road east-west.
Is that the one also with, that a housing development's being built on?
The housing's actually on Country Club Road.
Okay, but...
So, but that housing would put pressure on South S because a lot of people would want to go, if they want to go on Highway 30, it's quick to skip across South S and get over to S-14 the way it's built now.
That's the one that there was some recent inquiry about paving. I just want to make sure. Because, like, 265th or something like that, right? Okay, thank you, okay. Right, thank you.
So I, from our perspective, feedback to the DOT, the county's always had concerns about closing 600th Avenue, especially since we paved it. So that's the number-one issue for the county. Number two, I think we need, before we give feedback on the 6th Street interchange design, we need to see which way the city's leaning, see how the council meeting went last night. If the city decides to go with that, what they called their preferred alternative, that would be an interchange at Airport Road, and 6th would just be an overpass, and it would not have access to Highway 30 at 6th Street.
When is the feedback due to the DOT?
I think they would like to have it in the next week or two.
Well, Nevada said last night they were going to, I think that they were going to address this again on August 10th, which is two weeks, not next week. Right. So waiting for, to see what direction the city is going puts this way late, just a comment.
Correct.
And last night, I think at least two of us were listed in on that council meeting. You had a council, I had another board meeting, but thank you. So this is what I ended up with. I kept track here. So preferred would be to have the S-14 to 6th with a on-and-off access. Was preferred by the Nevada Economic Development, I think it's kind of called, Council, Main Street Nevada. There were a couple members of the task force that originally had dealt with this over several years ago, okay? In favor, there were four people who spoke, who were in favor of, with only one, only the DOT a 41 on-on-off access point, all right? In favor of then Airport Road, which is West 18. There were four people. It was interesting that two of them were what I consider professionals. One was, was, or still is, Dallas County P&amp;B, connected with that. The other one had been a county engineer for a long time. So I found it interesting on their comments, all right? And there was one person who liked the 600th and then along Frontage Road over to West 18. Admittedly, he had said that his business would prefer that, that he understood where Airport Road might, you know, Airport Road would be better for his business, but 6th Street would be better for the county, he felt, as in the county and Nevada residents because of the traffic going straight north into Verbiel and Lincoln Way, the Key Co-op, et cetera. So for farm and local traffic, that was better. Just to let you know what the feedback to the City of Nevada was last night. We've also had some feedback from some farmers who are really concerned about 600th not being accessible, I mean, that closed off. And there were about 10 people that commented last night. I found it interesting that neither Nevada Economic Development Commission or the Main Street Nevada people had problems with Airport Road being closed. Right. More than all persons. So I just thought, you know, my personal thought, listening to it, was that the City of Nevada is really going to speak on the issue of S-14 and 6th, and I think that's their real issue. I think our issue might really appropriately be with the farmers and rural folks in incorporated areas who will really, you know, there's not even an overpass on 600. You know, I think probably, I even thought about an overpass, and then thought, well, probably for the intersection they're talking about, an overpass as opposed to an overpass, you know, plus access lanes, probably the overpass is the biggest cost of it anyway. Person did speak against it, and it's because she has property on that corner. And noticed that their house would probably be...
And notice that their house would probably be taken through that.
Yeah.
And, and I, I, I kind of felt for her when I heard that, you know? But the reality, I think, is when you're looking at any kind of a street or road project. You're looking at, you know, where's the greater good in it? And I look at closing six hundredth and I hear what the farmers are saying about Airport Road, it's not a good place to combine down. And I can certainly with that, when you got curbs, you got a lot of traffic there. Here's one question I have though, and it's because of the next agenda item as well. When we're looking at Lincoln Way and six hundredth. And thinking about there being an interchange there, what kind of pressure does that put on that intersection there? Which right now just has a two-way stop. And that almost goes to, if we're thinking way in the future and we're thinking, and we haven't made a decision on it, whether or not we pave two twentieth. Whether the city of Nevada would pave then the part that goes to Lincoln Way. We're creating an awfully, we could in several years create an awfully busy intersection. And I've just been thinking about that, what, would that have to be a four-way stop then, for, in terms of just safety? If you're talking about farm equipment coming along there, if you're talking about trucks come along there to Verbio, Lincoln Way, where, you know, the Co-op, wherever. We could have a lot of slow cross-traffic on that road.
Did you say six, six hundredth and Lincoln Way?
Yes.
That currently has a turn lane built into it, the city of Nevada did.
Okay, it does have a turn lane, but. I'm just thinking about, there's a lot of traffic that doesn't turn there. I'm thinking of, traffic is coming up north on six hundredth. And crossing Lincoln Way there, there'll be more of that traffic if there's an, if there's an interchange on Highway thirty.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
So I'm saying, isn't that something, I mean, just, we're looking at two projects here and one of them we have less control over than the other, obvious. But is that something that we would want to talk with the city of Nevada about, because that's Nevada's intersection, correct?
Correct. And the last, the last feedback I got from the DOT, they're viewing it as, there's only going to be one interchange built. So six hundredth isn't really even being considered at, at this point. So in their mind, six hundredth is getting closed regardless of which option they pick. But like you said, maybe we could request an overpass bridge, at least to get that south ag traffic across Highway thirty.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't solve them using, being able to use thirty, but at least it crosses Highway thirty then, which right now they're talking about just totally.
So Darren, if you could confirm my memory here, is part of the discussion related to six hundredth? Was that right now, trucks had been coming over and turning up at thirty on five eightieth, which is now Ames' Teller Avenue. And when they were going north and turning onto Lincoln Way, it was a tight turn for them to take that right turn, when you're talking about semis and large equipment. Which was one of the things that also, the reasons that the county paved six hundredth. Because a left turn is easier for those large vehicles, right, those large trucks and stuff, correct?
Yeah, that was part of it.
So keeping in mind, along with what Linda's saying, even though about once we get them to Lincoln Way. You know, a left turn, there'll be a left turn at Airport Road if they come off on Airport Road also. Correct? So there, and then I'm going to come back to five eightieth, and is five eightieth would be closed also, correct?
No, that's where the interchange is going, we're pretty sure of that right now, the plans are in the works, five eightieth will get an interchange.
Five eightieth, we'll get an interchange, so we'll have.
Three years.
Okay, thank you, so there's going to be an issue either way on Lincoln Way. I mean, you know, about that wherever they route off of. Okay, there's going to be an issue with getting them on Lincoln Way and keeping traffic flowing or preventing accidents is more accurate, thank you, okay.
So Darren, with the reset that five eightieth would get an interchange regardless, are there going to be other paving that we're going to have to plan for? Elevate that up in future planning, since we paved six hundredth and now that's going to be a mute issue for. Before it and, and.
Yeah, as, as far as the five eightieth interchange goes, there's going to be about three miles of paved frontage roads they're going to build. Fortunately, DOT is going to pay for those to build them, but then the DOT has got to take over responsibility after they're built.
DOT takeover?
Story County will.
Okay.
And that will include a frontage road over to five ninetieth to the better area.
What do we think the volume of traffic's going to be on that frontage road?
Do we have an idea? I'm just, that's running through the East Industrial area and that's. Part of what Dan Coleham was trying to address in his email to us, is that this is an area that once it starts growing. You know, we could be looking, I know from the discussion we had at the executive committee for the AEDC, almost a week and a half ago. There were a couple of projects just discussed in general, alright, one might be having three hundred trucks a week, possibly, okay? You know, that, that's not anywhere near negotiated out or whatever, but I mean, that was just a number thrown out, think about that. You know, five days a week, that's sixty trucks.
It's just too bad that they've taken six hundredth, that seems more of the street.
And it's, and the safest, yeah, and they could go also right through it, depending on what we, county would do with two twenty, have the, all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I think the question comes is, even though the DOT is saying they're taking that off the table, is. What does the county feel like on that? Does the county feel like that is the safest and more appropriate one versus the other locations?
I think for. Speaking for residents in the unincorporated areas, I think six hundredth seems pretty important. And I don't know, I, I brought up an overpass opposed to a full intersection, just because it was something. That would create that connection and not just cut everybody off. I think a full intersection there probably. Or interchange, full interchange, pardon me, is probably the better thing. Darren, do you have thoughts on, on it?
At which intersection?
Six hundredth.
Yeah, and that's kind of what the, the task force came up with, was an interchange at six hundredth and one at Sixth Street. I think that would be the best, but I don't think the DOT is willing to fund that. So from a county perspective, I think we could put that in our letter, that'd be our preferred alternative, but. Not sure that's one of the alternatives the DOT is going to take on.
If we don't mention it in the letter though, then how do they know?
Right.
Yeah, so, I understand, thank you for asking us to be realistic or with our expectations, but it doesn't hurt to mention it.
And I could also. We could do some follow-up with the city of Nevada, just to see if, and I don't know that they'll be sharing thoughts until they have their meeting on the tenth. But we will meet the following day. So, do you think that would be too late for us to finalize a letter, if you were to give us a draft?
No, I, I think that would be fine, I think the DOT is mainly wanting Nevada to come up with the decision fairly soon and then, yeah. Then I think they'd be willing to wait on our input for another week.
It might be nice to see what Nevada's got and, and we could also share that we're concerned about six hundredth with the city.
Okay.
I don't disagree with that, but questions would just come is, what if their recommendations are different than what we're thinking? So you waited to find out that their recommendations or their thoughts are different, I mean, just, you're going to have to be aware of that, at least we know that then.
Yeah, but I, I do, Lucy, you got a good point. I mean, we know what, what we believe is best for the county.
Right.
Okay, the city of Nevada, they've got citizens, it looks like, split between the two of those. And really, once we're out of this, I mean, you know, we, like you're saying, we don't really have a preference of, between the other two, correct? Darren, I mean, from a county roads perspective or maintenance or, or anything like that.
Yeah, not really, as, as long as they include like Maple Avenue and Sixth Tenth paving in the DOT project, if they. Put, if they don't put an interchange at Sixth.
Okay.
But it sounds like that's what the city's. Preferred alternative right now, sounds like Sixth as the interchange spot. If that's the case, that'll take a lot of pressure off our gravel roads in the area.
So do we want Darren to draft a letter, start a letter on the six hundredth?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and get that started.
Okay, appreciate that.
Are you going to have them, have them bring it back on our next August fifth meeting or wait till the August eleventh for the August fourth? For a letter?
I would say wait till the eleventh.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, I just want to make sure we're clear.
And it was, it was helpful to hear resident feedback, to be able to listen to the Nevada meeting. I don't know if we have anybody on today or not, but. But it was helpful. And it was helpful for the couple of, the citizens who approached us or sent emails explaining their. Positions or why originally ride preferences were, but I still think then we'll have everything that we would need for Darren to finish off a letter.
That's right. Okay.
Thank you, Darren.
Yep, thank you.
Now we'll go on to the next.
It wasn't discussed in consideration, so we have to.
We directed the engineer to draft a letter.
For the six hundredth. I'll make that as a motion if that's helpful. Okay, I move that we direct the, the county engineer to draft a letter based upon our discussion today. Second.
Further discussion? Olsen, I, Peanuts, I, Burke and I. Darren, discussion of two hundred and twentieth street paving project and right-of-way acquisition process?
Okay. This is just a discussion item today, I wanted to get just the board thinking about this project again, since we kind of delayed it. I gave some reasons why it's been somewhat delayed. First of all, the project is paving two twentieth or thirteenth street, the two miles from five eightieth over to six hundredth Avenue. The project's been designed and so we're at the right-of-way negotiation stage right now, we started those negotiations last fall. Negotiations were put on hold for a number of reasons, I'll go through those. There was some negotiations of the ag land values that we were offering, was a point of. The negotiations, we couldn't get passed and then, then COVID hit, so we put the negotiations on hold for a while. COVID's not going away anytime soon, so we need to decide how we're going to proceed. So we stopped negotiations and then we weren't sure also how the COVID was going to impact our funding situation. Secondly, we still have the DD five developments and we're not sure what direction that could go in the future, that goes underneath this paving, so. A lot of ways I'd like to know how that's going to end up before we pave it, so we can accommodate whatever the Drainage District decides to do under this roadway. The city of Nevada currently has no plans to pave a six hundredth Avenue, that half-mile stretch of gravel from two twentieth street down to the Co-op. We kind of had an informal agreement in the past where we were going to include a half a mile of the city's portion of two twentieth. Into our bonding and then the city would pave that half a mile stretch left of gravel. Since then, the city's taken that out of their plan, so there's no current plan for the city to pave that, so we essentially have a paved road ending. And in my mind, if we go ahead and just pave two twentieth, we really don't have much leverage left for the city to say, hey, you do your part and we'll do ours. Next one, the city of Ames, their future plans for five eightieth railroad crossing are unclear at this point. The last discussions I had with some city staff is they didn't have plans to close the railroad crossing. There's talk of a lot of additional railroad sightings and stuff in the area and we, we're kind of making the assumption that might close that crossing at some point. We're still waiting, that, that probably won't get real clear for a number of years. The DOT Highway thirty interchange plans we just talked about, it could have some impact on the traffic patterns out there. So once we get a little more concrete vision of what that's going to look like would help. And depending on what they do, we, it could, like, we talked, have some impact on other gravel roads that might take a higher priority like South S, depending on what they do. Then lastly, the recent bond issue did not include this project, but we could bond again, but there's no. Real hurry right now to get this project letting paid for because we didn't bond for it in the first issue. So from my perspective right now, I, I, there's really not a real sense of urgency to get this road paved next year. So I, I think with all those issues, I wouldn't mind waiting one more year to see where they all pan out and then decide where we go. We've got it designed, ready to go, so it can be done fairly quickly, once we get a better feel for where everything stands. That's some background on that. Yep.
Okay, so this is not how I understood this to come down, alright? As I understood it to come down, that the negotiation stopped on the right-of-way and that was the impetus for putting this on hold. These other considerations are the first I've heard of there, okay? So they've not come up in previous conversations about why this has been put on hold, I just want to make note of that, okay? So second of all, that there comes a time when a board has to make the decision, the board has to take over and can take the advice, listen to the advice. Of, of someone like the county engineer, but there are other factors at work that we ask the staff not to consider. I mean deliberately, we ask the staff not to be involved in what would be a more political process combined to, should we do something now or should we do something later? The previous board of supervisors, or maybe two or three configurations, okay? Have all talked about this, worked toward this, had discussion about this because of the East Industrial area. And then a line came in, did the Prairie View and reserved acres, etc. My concerns are not that any of these are not valid, well, I think the five hundred and eightieth railroad one is, is a real crapshoot way down the road, okay? But my concern is that the county is not going to be prepared to handle, if we keep on pushing this off, is not going to be prepared. To handle what may come to the East Industrial area of Prairie View. That all of a sudden there's going to be somebody who, who's going to come in and within a year, start to put a huge load in that area related. And, and it, once again, it's an if, it's not a will, alright? But then, but we're being told from what I call the more political perspective or the updates to the board for board decision-making. More related to economic development, we're being told that inquiries are still coming and they're robust inquiries and that the. AEDC staff are working on what all appear to be viable options for the industrial area to start to be developed. And I would hate for the work of previous boards and for the work of the AEDC, et cetera, to end up causing some kind of complications with routing in that area, or for us to lose a project, because they take a look at the situation on Lincoln Way, Old Lincoln Way, and the Highway 30, and they say, well, geez, if we have that road north paved, we could get in and off. Remember, 220th is East 13th, there's an interchange on the interstate there. So for that two miles of paving, we could open up a whole nother access point for companies who are interested in having access to the interstate. So I just don't want, just, let me back up, because I don't wanna say just, okay? I'd like to make sure that it's the board that makes the decision, not staff, because there will be ramifications to the decision if we delay, or future boards delay and delay, and then either a project is lost, or development of the East Industrial Way is, is hampered based upon us not paving those two miles.
You had me there for a while, something you said, though, just confused me.
Okay.
About I-35 and 13th Street. And that gets access to the East Industrial Area. But the other, on the other hand, I'm hearing that 580th might be closed off. So that restricts?
Well, if 580th is closed off, though, and we're paving 220th, all right? Okay, so they close off 580th, that Highway 30 is what they're talking about, closing it off. And, and so people would be coming off of I-35.
There's still gonna be more tracks there.
There might be, but nobody would be crossing them. If they close off Teller, Teller ends at Highway 30 anyway, okay? Right? So how do, what's the other access way for people to get into the East Industrial Area? They either gonna go down, we know it's probably not 600th, but, so they're gonna have to go down to Airport Road, or they're gonna go up I-35 and get off on East 13th, take a right, okay, and go down, and then they could get into the East Industrial Area over the back way.
Seems like there's a, yeah, so there's a lot of speculation. Are they gonna close it? Where are they gonna close it?
Yes.
Those kind of things, I'm concerned in terms of paving something that ends up at a gravel road then, instead of going to other pavement. Darren, what, what has this Nevada said to you about that? Are they, they just, they don't have the money, they're not interested, they don't see it as that useful a project? I, I, I'd like to know more.
And I'd like to know what the Nevada City Council has said, because once again, this is where you get into the elected officials versus what maybe is being sent in by Larry Stevens or the new city man.
And our last discussion was right in the middle of the changeover of the city manager, so that information came from their consulting engineer, who told me it was not in their current program at all. So we need to talk to the new city administrator, see where this really stands. He's on board now, so can start having those discussions again with the city.
And we need to talk to the city council, or, you know, give Jordan a time, the new city manager, a time to bring this before the council. Because that's where I'm saying about, it's time for the politicians to take over, the elected officials to give direction to staff.
Darren, so this is just a discussion, then would it be better to have those, have those discussions with Nevada City Council? With their new city manager, that we have a better?
Yes.
Updated data, updated information before we're making any particular decision? Because otherwise, right now, we're going with con assumption.
I agree, I, I am totally for that, which is why I think I'd ask if Darren can pull it together. Yeah, so that's what I'd like to see happen, is that we get that updated information, and then we can, I guess, you know, then make a decision too, but that would be the next step. Let's get updated information, and including seeing what the AEDC would be able to release. Me sitting at this table saying, in general terms, what we had in the discussion isn't. Yeah, yeah, isn't, isn't any better than, you know, anything else, but, you know, what can we do about taking a look?
So Darren, I have another question for you. And it's, if we don't make a decision today, which we're not gonna do, it's just discussion, but we're looking at a process. What if we, what would a timeline look like? If we delayed a few months in making a decision, as we're collecting information? What would, can you put together a timeline?
Yeah. Because this, we, this is a locally let project, we don't have to go through the DOT for the letting. We can do this a little bit on a shorter timeframe than normal. So delaying this a couple months, even three, four months, we could still let this next spring and get it done next year without a problem. Depending on how the right-of-way negotiations go, of course, but that's always the wild card in any project. But yeah, assuming that all goes well, yeah, that wouldn't be a problem delaying this a few months.
Yeah, I just think it would be better if we had that updated information.
Certainly, and I think also what's going on with Highway 30 does have some implications here. So if we knew about that, and, and where the city, if the city of Nevada is just saying, no, we're not interested at all, or we would put this in a plan for a couple of years from now, whatever. I think that's, that would be useful.
Okay. I appreciate it, I'm good, I'm good, just that it's back on, back on the forefront, and we've got a plan for the next step, which is updated.
Let me go into the second half of my notes there. The second half is just, if we decide to move forward with this, we're gonna have to address the ag land value issues. So I wanted to give you some background on that to think about before. Like I said, if we decide to discuss this about our negotiation in detail, we're gonna have to go into closed session, but right now, I just want to give you the general information. Some of our prior recent paving projects, I put some of our land values that we offered. So in 2016, most of it was at 10,600, but there was one parcel that was a little more at 11,000 per acre. Grant in University, both those, we offered 14,000 acres, because we had some development ground right adjacent to it that was, had some recent sales at those prices, so we were able to justify those, a little bit higher cost with those two. For this one in particular, 220th, the valuation for that ag land, we had it professionally appraised, and it came in at $10,300 per acre, which matched a recent sale right along that roadway that happened last summer at 10,300. In that professional appraisal, the highest comp sale they found in the area was at $11,798. That was just south of Nevada on S-14, just past the trailer park there. The 2019 ISU land value study shows the highest ag land value at $9,700, for the highest quality farm ground in Story County. And in a total, we need to acquire 8.12 acres for this project. If we went with the 10,300, it'd be $83,000 total for the, the land value purchase. And if we decide to increase that, we, we'd have to do it for all landowners through there, so you could see what that cost would be accordingly. So.
And the land, that this one particular landowner who is totally not for more money, okay? What percentage does that one particular landowner have of the total acres, 8.12, we have to buy?
Sure. It's somewhere between 80 and 70 and 80%, I believe it was, and then some of it, he farms it, he doesn't actually own it, but he farms it as a tenant, so the majority of the land out there is one landowner.
And my next question is that these are all done at ag value. Now, in, do we ever get different appraisals or ask for it based upon, say, potential commercial value, or potential, you know, something like that, where there might be an air of transition there?
That's, their appraisal is supposed to take that into account. They don't just strictly do it at ag value, they, they look at the recent sales, and one, there was a recent sale right on that roadway, one of the parcels we're actually purchasing from, so that was a, a good value to use.
Okay, thank you, I just wondered how they, they pulled that in.
Yep.
I don't have any other questions.
Supervisor Headens, do you have any other questions? Okay, so we're getting more information from Nevada, and Supervisor Olson may get more information from AEDC.
Yep.
Okay, and I'll, I'll go ahead, and Darren, maybe you and I could talk to the city administrator and the city council. That be okay?
That sounds good.
Okay.
Thanks, Darren.
Anything else on that?
No, thank you, yeah.
That's it for now.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Discussion and consideration of how Story County Government is providing services to the public during the COVID-19 pandemic. I put this on the agenda, we were getting into discussion as three supervisors last CCMT meeting, and I just said, in the interest of time, maybe in a better, we continued it at our weekly supervisors meeting. So where we are is we closed the county buildings on March 27th to the public, and we sent most of our employees, all the essential ones, home to work. We then brought most of our workforce back on June 7th? It was right after the primary election, and have been, remain close to the public since then. But serving, but having everybody at work, basically, and serving the public through email, phone, postal service, website, applications, various ways. And what we've heard mostly is that we are getting customer needs met. We have seen other jurisdictions opening, so we are continuing to look at benchmarks, continuing to look at information, also looking at appointment software. So maybe just discussion, it says discussion and consideration, but we do not need to act today, because it says consideration, we put that on in case we, we wanted to. So is there discussion among the supervisors on direction at this point? We've also got emails from several.
Yeah, so I, so as, kind of recap also, is that I brought this up at the CCMT meeting based upon an email that was labeled admin building reopening discussion, but then was written by Treasurer Ted Rasmussen, but then went into what Mr. Rasmussen was going to allow his staff to do and not do about various scenarios of serving the public and opening the buildings. And so I felt it was time that we have the discussion. The other reason I asked that we have this discussion now is that that as of, I believe it's August 24th, that Ames reopens, Ames K through 12 is reopening, I believe the 26th Nevada reopens, I mean, the school starts, okay? And we're fighting, and most, more and more places are reopening. And so the reason that we quit, we shut the buildings down to the public and said we were going to only serve via remotely, if at all possible, was based upon protecting the public and protecting our staff, or you could flip them around, okay? And the, the reason for protecting the staff was not only do we care about their health, but we need healthy staff to provide services. Well, with the, basically, the schools opening up on the week of the 24th, with Iowa State coming back on the week of the 17th, our, our, our communities and the county, as in the lowercase county, all right, are going to be reopening, and that the ability for us to protect our staff, whatever protect means now at this point, from enhanced exposure risk goes out the window, because we can only control our staff, if you will, what they experience in environment theory and during their working hours. And we know already that we have employees who are sheltering at home, not because they have been exposed to someone with COVID, but their family members have, or their friends, or whatever. So we are, that bubble of protection that we started this with is going away as society moves back into functioning. And I think we have been proactive with the Plexiglas, with the sanitizer stations all over, with the thorough frequent cleaning, both in various areas, and plus what the facility staff has done, et cetera. And there are people who are asking, when are you going to open up? I love that Supervisor Burkin, who gets a lot of these calls, if it gets to the supervisor's level, has given a great response, tell me what you can't have, what you, were unable to get done. And she's not getting really responses back. There is a group of people who want access to the buildings, or there are some services that do need to be performed on-site, looking at app for abstractors, et cetera. So which is why we went to scheduling the appointment software. But Treasurer Rasmussen's email, pretty well, or letter, whatever you wanna call it, he really kind of brought it to the forefront about when he is asking for that we consider that we hire uniformed people to stay at the front, front of the building to let people in and out, even via the appointment software, whatever. That took it to, that takes it to another level of costs, it takes it to another level of messaging, and it takes it to another level of what are we doing here that meet our primary goals, and what are we gonna do that's realistic? So I thought it was great what Supervisor Burkin did at the Wednesday meeting of our continuity of government management meeting, which, by the way, is open for anyone who wants to listen in on it. But when she said, hey, let's get feedback, more feedback from the staff, and we did get some feedback from the staff. And so I would like us to look at, what can we do that's realistic and maybe a compromise between just throwing the doors open, unlocking the doors everywhere, and staying so locked in that we are not providing some people the opportunity to come to the administration building? So that's by where I am, the position here. You know, I think we need to start talking about it, especially with the request on the table to expend money, possibly a great deal of money. We also have a situation where there's special elections in three school districts coming up. One of them Nevada, so the auditor has already informed us that the lobby's gonna need to be opened up again, or if we open the, if we unlock the front doors, that she'll have people come up to vote at her counter. So that's, that's really what I think we need to do, is we need to discuss what are reasonable parameters for getting even the appointment software operating.
This is the auditor, I have repeatedly asked you not to conflate voting with opening of this building. It's a separate issue, and I really would prefer that it not be dragged into this, thank you.
Okay, and I need to respond with all respect, with the voters coming through the same doors, I could use your help, Lucy, in deciding where we need to draw that line about a person walking up to the front door to vote versus a person walking up to the front door wanting to see another department. So please help me with this, I'm not, I'm not trying to violate anything with you. I'm trying to really determine, where's that line about, about letting people into the building?
I'm saying these are two separate issues, and please do not confuse them or relate them in any way. I just, do not use me as a battering ram for your agenda, thank you.
Excuse me, I, I'm not, I think if we open the building, we open the building. So, okay, going on, all right?
Okay, I was, are you finished?
I guess so, unless, unless Auditor Martin wants to continue that discussion.
Let me ask Supervisor Headens, what her thoughts are at this point?
Well, one thing is, you know, we have purchased, or the process of purchasing the, what is it, no wait inside, or no wait? no wait inside or no wait outside software. Hopefully, I believe the Treasurers and the Recorder's Office were trying that out. I forgot to actually give a call in to test it. So I would like an update to know how that software is working. I'd also like an update on the other counties. I know there were several counties that were only open by appointment. I don't recall, I'd have to look back at some of my notes as to how many there were that were just going by appointment that weren't totally open yet.
The number I recall is 16, however, since then Polk County has closed again.
Right.
And they closed again because of the numbers.
Right, right, right.
So we've only got two, there are two counties in the state of Iowa, from my understanding, they're closed, if you will. Polk County and Storytown. Everybody else is open. So I understand that a date by appointment, and I think that's very important based upon all those parameters that Treasurer Rasmussen put in his letter saying he will not have this staff do.
I I guess for me, I guess I'd like to, if we're doing it in more of a sequential timeout, then to me, we should probably be doing the appointment and seeing how that that works. Is that a barrier to folks getting all the services that they need?
And that's, I agree with you. It was the letter where he said he wouldn't have his people go to the door to meet people and take them back the 10 or 12 steps to his office.
I would like the opportunity to comment when you guys are done discussing.
I I understand that. So so for me, what I read there is that we don't have uniformity or consensus. And that was in that update about from the reopening discussion. There was not consensus among the people who met in that meeting about whether there should be someone at the door letting people in or not. So so that's back to, I'm online with you about the appointment system. And I think, you know, it was a two-week period we discussed for the Recorder and Treasurer's Office to see if it really worked as in, you know, those setting those sample appointments, right, et cetera. And then, but as we head into then, the end, that August, that week in August, is when the community opens back up. And so, yes.
With that request from the Treasurer. Ted, would you can you unmute yourself and join the conversation?
So to clarify, at our building reopening committee meeting last week, we had discussed the option of keeping the front door locked and having those departments that set up appointments going back and forth from the front door to do it. That was what was discussed at our meeting. After that meeting, I met with Auditor Martin and Recorder Herridge in the lobby, and we discussed the logistics of it. I also discussed with my deputies the logistics of it, at which point I determined I would not feel comfortable asking my staff to constantly walk back and forth from the front door and basically remove all of the safety precautions we put into place with the Plexiglas, with some of the other things, and have that much interaction with up to 25 to 50 individuals on a daily basis with those appointments. My attitude is that, yes, we can reopen the building. We can reopen it in better and more organized ways or we can reopen it in less organized ways. But one of the ways that I will not be reopening my office is requiring people to go back and forth to the front door. I suggested that we have someone at the front door and provide some sort of controlled entry into the building because most counties that have reopened that are of a larger population are using this. Whether they're asking questions, whether they're ensuring people are wearing a mask. Many of the counties I have discussed reopening with are doing that. With the setup of our county, if we're going to do that, we have to have someone at the front desk. From all that I have heard, the board does not intend to have anyone at the front desk. I personally think that would be a mistake, but that is your prerogative. What I'm saying is we will not be going back and forth from the front door to let people in and escorting them in and out of the building. If we come up with a different way to reopen, we can address that when those plans are discussed. I just didn't want us to move forward with the idea that because our office is the most visited office in the building, we would be escorting people in and out because we don't feel that's fair to our team here in the Treasurer's Office. And we also had fear for the public in terms of what kind of exposure that creates if we were to have a positive test or what kind of the exposure that plate, you know, can create when folks are milling around at the front of the door coming in and out. We can discuss more detailed plans at your leisure, but I'm just saying that that plan for reopening is off the table for my office. If the Recorder, Auditor, or various, you know, planning and development want to do a system like that, I am okay with them doing that in any way, but we will not be going back and forth to a locked front door. Thank you.
Can I ask a question for you? So if you were going to use the no wait, you know, make appointment software, how would you utilize that then?
We won't use that until the front door is opened. I would obviously like someone at the front door helping to check people in and out based on the software. But if not, we will have some sort of way at the front door of our specific office to only allow people in with an appointment.
Let me give you a little bit of feedback. And we didn't ask that everybody replied to all in their in their emails to the supervisors. But all the other people we heard from, all the other department heads we heard from were comfortable having staff go to the door, even offices that were on different floors. And and I'm just going to read something from somebody who who said that the person didn't think that going to the door to greet a citizen was going to increase risk because there are interactions where people are wearing masks and are less than 15 minutes. And if we were to, if we were to hire somebody to be at the door to let people in, that person who we hired or assigned would be getting the same exposure to the public as you're saying you're not, you think it's inappropriate. So I don't know how, I I think when we talk about risk, we're, we cannot talk about eliminating all the risk in the world. We go to grocery stores. We are, as Supervisor Olson said, going to be having children who go to school. You know, it, we can't eliminate risk. We we manage the risk the best we can. I have some concern about the message we give to the public by having a guard at our door. Quite honestly, I I don't think that that's the message we want to give to the public, that we don't trust you. And I think we can do maybe a better job of messaging to the public. I think the primary reason we're looking at this, not just opening the doors and having people rushing in, is because of the difficulty of providing social distancing. You know, if if we open the doors and people are just going to come in, you're going to have to have a staff member telling everybody they have to be six feet from each other. I think that that's even harder. You know, I think it's harder to protect the public if we open the doors and don't control access to our buildings. I just needed to say those things. Thank you.
I guess my response to that would be, we could open the doors and have a a member of, whether it's ours, you know, whether it's a Story County employee or a contract employee, behind Plexiglas at the front counter with their mask and face shield on, checking in people, which would be a very short interaction, and they could go in from there. We could set it up in a way to make it a controlled access. I believe that going in and out, it's not just an issue of safety. It's also an issue of logistics and a lot of, a lot of I would say unnecessary or over the top movement back and forth, which we are currently providing every service possible. We've worked with the DOT to do that. It will slow our workload down and our processing down. And I I feel like logistically, the other offices face maybe, the Recorder might see 10% of the people on a daily basis. The other offices are probably 1% of the people that come in and out of the Treasurer's Office on a daily basis. Many of the other offices have side doors that they could use in some way. They do not have, you know, I would say cash or other things that they have concerns of access to, like our department. We just logistically are not in a good spot in the building to provide access where we are letting people in and out of a door at all times. That is, that's my opinion. I think that whether it's a uniform guard or not, I just think that for the building as a whole, that may not be an a bad idea going forward once the pandemic is over. We have someone who is at the front desk, but due to her other job duties, she's not there all the time. We have lots of people that come in looking for information that either come into our office or the Recorder's Office or go downstairs to Information Technology looking for information. So my attitude would be, we need someone there that is, that's their only job function and there all the time. Now, if that, if others don't agree, I guess that's their opinion and ultimately it's a board decision. But I feel like the opening of the office with locked doors and having people go in and out with the crowd forming at the front door, that may or may not, social distance, is not the best approach and not one that I can get behind asking my staff to go back and forth around what we built was a, we felt was a fairly safe Plexiglas wall and using masks to now go in and out of the lobby constantly all day.
Let me ask you a question if I might. And and maybe we've got different things in mind because sometimes that's why it's good to kind of keep talking and communicate about this. And let me tell you what I've had in my mind as an image of how this would work. And it doesn't mean it's a decision by anybody, but it's kind of my concept. My concept was we would be providing appointments only when business could not be done any of the other ways we are doing business. In other words, you wouldn't be saying, you want to come do whatever, you know, Linda Merkin, you want to come pay your drainage district assessment, fine, come on in. You still have a Dropbox. You still have, you know, various other means for people to do business that are maybe not exactly what they want, but they work fine. So my thought was we'd only be using appointments for when we can't do business any other way or when it's just would facilitate getting something done that's being very difficult to get done otherwise. Does that change your your image of all the people your staff would be going to let in the door every day?
If we were to take that approach, we'd only have about one or two a week. We can handle every piece of business through the Dropbox, email, phone, or online payments. The only thing that we have to do is if there is a death and somebody needs to transfer a vehicle, usually we can still do that through phone and then the Dropbox. But at times that, because of some signatures needed, is easier to do in person. We have met with about four or five of those in the parking lot and taken care of those. In terms of all other business, we can do it in other ways.
And I think that's what I've been thinking about in emails that I've read is that appointments would be when we can't get it done another way, not throwing the doors open or saying, you know, you want to come do this in person, fine, come do it in person. So and that would be, there would have to be a consistent message that people would have to give. We'd have to figure out how to give that message consistently.
So and I would like, I have a question Ted, based upon what you said and what Linda's asking, all right? Because when we had previous discussions about this and we were talking about the appointment software, you were talking about so many appointments an hour and et cetera. We did, we did our financial calculations based upon you. I mean, this is really a discussion all about the Treasurer's Office because with the Recorder's Office already has a plan. And as you pointed out, the rest of us are just functioning just fine. We had a couple of people who said, fine, whatever we do, do it uniformly with the doors. Okay, that's all they want to know. And they want it, they want employees to be treated uniformly. Okay, so whatever we end up with, they don't want one, one group of employees to get exempted from something that the rest have to do. All right? But let's, I might, here's my question to you. What is in your mind then about that final opening? Because what Supervisor Merkin described to me is what I thought we were going to start doing with the interim stage, which was having you set those boundaries about, having everyone continue to set those boundaries about, hey, no, I'm sorry, you can do that online or send us a check, right? And so, so when I read your comments, what I read is you weren't going to send anybody to the front door. And that was one of, as I said, my concerns about, we've got to have this discussion now, that the county, you know, society would be not. But I thought, well, if Ted, who's got the most people who are going to be coming in even on a, just when it can't be done another way, if he's not going to send anybody to the front door, well, then that's not an option. So let me ask you this. At what point are we at the point where literally you're not going to let your staff go open the door for anybody? Or are we in a transition to try the transition stage of by appointment only if they can't get it done in any other way?
We were under the assumption that the appointment software was to relieve some of the stress of people asking for the building reopening. We can do all transactions for anyone, whether that's a plate exchange or whether that's a title transfer or anything along that through the mail. The DOT has given us that capability. So right now, truly, the only people who have to come in and take care of things are those issues where it's either a death or it's something very extenuating. We get very few of those. But our 40 to 80 appointments a day were going to be for title transfers to kind of work with people who did not want to do that in the new way, through the mail or through email or through the phone. Because of the governor's proclamations, that was extended. People don't have to take care of that immediately. They had some extra time. So we've had a lot of people who have said, we're just going to wait until you reopen. That was their choice, I guess. My attitude is, we see so many people so frequently, I would rather the front doors be open and people come to our door, at which point, if they have an appointment, we will see them. If they do not, we will turn them away and ask them to schedule an appointment. Hopefully Barb or IT is able to set up a kiosk in the lobby where they would do that or they could do it on their phone right at that time. But I feel like the extra exposure of going back and forth for each individual, each individual team member from our area on each of those appointments is a lot of exposure and a lot of extra, just extra logistic work. And if they do get to a locked front door and there are people who want to come in that do not have an appointment, I do not want to put someone who is not I do not want to put someone who is not, you know, been trained for or have it in their job description to do crowd control, to be stuck doing crowd control at a crowded front door. That's my general concerns. Also at a crowded front door that is locked, the public could, I don't know, I don't know the right term, but they could, there could be a large group of them there, which would make a lot of people who had appointments uncomfortable as they have people without appointments all congregating around a locked front door, waiting for somebody to open it and let them in. I feel like if we let them into a building that has clearly marked spaces for appointments and better yet, someone at the front counter that is accepting them in, it'd be a better situation for everyone in a more controlled situation. I know that right now, when I go to the front door to get packages from FedEx, if there's someone at the front door, they often demand to be let in. And when you explain to them that the building is still closed, usually they are fine with that and they'll make the phone call, but not everyone is excited with that. So I don't feel that it is fair to our team to ask them to deal with those types of situations. And maybe they won't arise very often. But when they do, I also don't know that it's fair that we've equipped members of our team with the proper skills, training and capabilities to deal with those. Those are my concerns.
We talked about your team and what's trained. So one of the feedbacks that we, one of the pieces of feedback we got about, about saying everybody needs to open at the same time is, is from another office in this building who said, because when the treasurer's door isn't open, people come to us and start to ask, we want in, how do we get to the treasurer? Then Darla's been getting phone calls. And of those phone calls, at least a third are specifically saying, how do I get to the treasurer's office? And they're very frustrated, those callers are, that, that you guys have turned off your answering issue. So, you know, they feel like they're stuck having to dial in over and over again. And then they come to another person now, you know, call the board supervisors or calling another department, trying to find you guys. So I'd like to point out that not, that there aren't a whole lot of people in this, in this building that are actually have had conflict resolution and crowd control as part of their training. All right? And yet because of some access issues that the public sees with the treasurer's office, they are having to still deal with that. So please understand, it's just not your staff. Okay? There are consequences rolling over from the decisions that you're making.
I understand that, that's why I'm suggesting that we keep somebody at the front door who is trained to deal with that.
On your budget or will we split, divide that among all the department's budgets?
I, I looked at our budget and for the last few years, the treasurer's office is completely funded by our motor vehicle transactions. And we usually turn in $50,000 to $60,000 extra, sometimes more, just from our motor vehicle transactions without considering any of our other duties. We turn that into the general fund. That's all revenue generated by the work in this office. So that's revenue created.
And then from a department that uses tax funds. Are we going to start dividing unity among employees?
I'm, I'm sorry, I think we're.
I don't get what your question is there, Loris.
I'm not doing a very good job of keeping this conversation focused. And I want to apologize for that. What we're talking about, if I can just kind of summarize here, is do we want to take a next step?
We authorized appointment software for the next step. We've already made that decision.
We have done that. We haven't said under the conditions under which that's going to be used.
Right.
We got eight responses when we asked in CCMT meeting last week. We have eight responses. And seven of those were saying, let's go buy appointments. Let's use the appointment software. And I may have read into that, it's only four things which can't be done in other ways. Seven of the eight said they were comfortable with staff going to the door, bringing, escorting people to their appointment and escorting people out. I think the majority wanted to keep the doors locked.
Right now for this stage.
Right. And for the foreseeable future.
Well, I'm sorry.
So I, I saw, I see it as a very limited appointment scenario. Ted, I'm hearing you kind of responding to a different thing, saying 40 to 80 appointments a day or something like that. And, and I, I put frankly, given all the things you have done and worked with the DOT to work out that people can do business with the county, even get their blackout plates without having to come and, and give their expired plates to you. I think you would have, you could limit it with a good consistent message to a very few appointments in the exceptional circumstances we're talking about. In other words, I don't think much would change from what we're already doing because we're already sliding into appointments. You know, you've done some, you may have done them out in the parking lot as opposed to letting people in. Recorder's office has been letting people in through another entrance granted. Supervisors, we've had some constituents who really wanted to talk to us in person. We've arranged, you know, and it's because of the, the information they want to. We arranged, I'm very careful, you know, you have to have a mask. You have to, you know, I'll meet you here, whatever. I think other departments have let people in occasionally, but it's just the only reasonable way to do business with them. And that has limited the number of appointments. So it's, it's really the exception, not the rule. I'm just going to say that's, that's kind of what, and I, I see some nodding at this table here. So I think I'm, what I'm trying to do is just kind of see is there a consensus among the supervisors that that's what we're talking about? Not giving anybody an appointment who wants one, but giving the appointment when it's the only way or the very best way to get that done. So I guess I'm presenting that to you as, and I also hear people saying, let's do it the same way as a county. Let's all do it together. So I guess that's why I'm summarizing that and presenting that to you as something that, does that help alleviate some of your concerns?
If we're, if we're to do it that way, there would be almost no appointments set up by the treasurer's office. If, if we're saying that the only ones we're allowing in is when there's no other option, which would not really limit the calls that come into this office or that come into other offices looking for this office. If that's the way we are going forward, I would be okay going out and letting people in at the very limited appointments. If we're trying to, trying to reduce some of the call stress that goes to other areas, we need to open up the appointments more. At that point, my preference would be to unlock the doors and have people come in rather than have people go in and out.
As one supervisor, I'm not willing to look at that myself because I think that gives us all more problems in trying to enforce social distancing. And there's some places where it'd be very hard to enforce social distancing.
I guess what I'm saying is you guys have the privilege of limiting that. In our office, we do not have that privilege. Once, once we open, we're open. You guys mentioned appointments. It would take the entire building a week to fill the appointments that will fill in one day. And that's not saying that our department is more important or better or anything along those lines. It's just saying that we deal with a different, just a different situation and level of public interaction. I think that when you go to a Target or a Walmart, they have someone at the front door. Maybe Fairway and Hy-Vee don't, but many, many places have someone at the front door, attempting to kind of just keep a handle on the situation. And that's what we need to be compared with is we're going to have the traffic flow of a Walmart, of a Target. We aren't going to have very limited traffic flow where it's easy to social distance. That's where I'm saying control at the front door provides more opportunity for that. But if we're going back and forth unlocking the front door for specific people, it lends itself to bigger issues of people wanting in. People who don't have appointments saying, I need to go see this person. Somebody may come to the door and say, I want to go see the supervisors that doesn't have an appointment. And now all of a sudden, our clerk is being, you know, is basically being told to say that to that person, no, and bar them entry, even though they have no idea whether they have an appointment with one of the three supervisors or with the auditor. I, I don't like that situation at the door. If we're going to open, I would prefer to open because that's the situation we're in. If the other departments want to do an appointment system where they unlock the front door for people, I think that's fine. I don't know that the treasurer's office will be able to participate in that until we have a better way. And we're talking about only 10 appointments a day, not 50 to 80.
But please, Ted, I think some, a lot of what you just said this last time is for the next stage that we're talking about, not what we're talking about right now. Because what I'm hearing is a consensus, and I'm just going to say it one more time, is that we keep our doors closed and locked. We continue, we will offer appointments to the public only when they cannot do the business through other available means.
Okay.
And I'm in agreement with that as long as that we do it for the month of August. And then we revisit the net, then at first meeting in September, we'll talk about what to do next. All right, I mean, I'd like to.
And that's what I took it from our last CMT meeting, is that we were going to give this a trial and see how it works. And see, I mean, you could always do appointment software too. Again, this will probably be the next stage, but just something to think of, of limiting how many appointments a day you'll, you'll do.
Right.
You don't have to do them every 10 minutes or whatever. You could say, we're only doing every 45 minutes. So that is just, that's down the road. But I took it too, that this was just our initial, what you can't do, let's make the appointments, utilize appointment software so that we can give it a try and see how is this working before we go on to the next particular step.
So I would entertain a motion that for the month of August, we continue where we have our doors closed in our buildings, to continue to keep the doors closed and to offer appointments to the public only when we can, they cannot do their business through other available means.
As determined by that department or office, I mean, we need it.
Yes.
Okay, so I think it's my turn. I will make that motion. And that with, with reconsideration as of first board of supervisors we need in September. Is that my, is that it? Okay.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Okay, I'm going to ask if anybody else, I have to admit, I'm sorry. I didn't ask if anybody else had anything they wanted to say. So I'm just going to say before we vote, does anybody else who's on, who have anything to say? Hearing then, Olson.
Aye.
Pedden.
Aye.
Merkin. Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody who gave us input.
Yeah.
Now.
Need to restart the computer with the.
We will go back now to the discussion and consideration of financial assistance request from Peter Gillan in Hickory Grove Mobile Home Park. And we have Jerry Moore and Ethan Anderson on the call. Jerry and Ethan, I would ask you first to.
Okay, good morning, board. This is, this is Jerry Moore, planning and development. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This is a request from Mr. Gillan, who is requesting financial assistance from the board to assist him and costs that he's incurring to remove four mobile homes from the Hickory Grove Mobile Home Park, which is located at 2279 East 190th Street in Milford Township. Mr. Gillan was requested to remove four mobile homes from 38 to 34, this is a court order. He received an email from Mr. Gillan in May, who indicated that he was, he started the process to remove the mobile homes. It was very complicated, very expensive. He was trying to meet the Iowa DNR requirements. And he asked if the board could assist with these costs, at which we asked Mr. Gillan to provide a written detailed explanation. And he did provide that on July 1. And he provided a document, a one-page document that addresses some of the details of those costs, which include expenses for attaching hitches to the four units, the actual payment to an individual to remove the units from the park as well as costs associated with removal of the deck. That total comes to $12,300. I think that's what he's requesting assistance for. He also identifies additional cost. And Mr. Gillan is on the line. I'll let him speak to those, costs that he incurred with the legal expenses, with the court situation and costs that he's incurred with the septic system. I do not think that that's a part of what he's requesting, but I'll let him speak to that. But at this point, I'll turn it over to Ethan Anderson, the Assistant County Attorney, who has additional information and the staff recommendation.
Yeah, thank you. So the recommendation from the Story County Attorney's Office is to decline Mr. Gillan's request for financial assistance with compliance with the zoning regulations. I think it's set it out in the document we submitted, Jerry and I did, that you've delegated to Jerry Moore the authority to enforce the Story County land development regulations. Part of that enforcement mechanism is seeking voluntary compliance. And that's what happened here over the span of about a year and a half with representatives of Hickory Grove Mobile Home Park, Ryan Holland and Sarah Franklin. When those discussions broke down, we took this matter to court. And there's a long history there in the court process. Now, the county ultimately prevailed. And now we're in a situation where he needed time. And I talked to his attorneys, Sarah Franklin and Ryan Holland, about how much time he would need to remove the trailers. And so July 19 was the order of the court. And I think Mr. Gillan attached that to his request. And we agreed to give him until August 2020 to remove the four non-compliant trailers. It was my understanding that the turnover in the park was such that that could be accomplished easily within a year's time. And so through natural attrition in the park, we would get to a point where no one would need to be evicted. And then it would just be a matter of cleaning up the trailers. Now, I understand that involves cost. Typically, when the county does enforcement actions, I can't think of an instance where we've paid costs of enforcement that we initiated. Now, it's not to say we haven't given people time to comply, but to pay or reimburse people's costs is not something we've done. We have, through abatement, advanced the costs and then recovered them from the, from the individual. But we've never directly assisted someone in an enforcement action we initiated. So again, with that background, I think Jerry and I would recommend denying Mr. Gillan's request at this time for financial assistance and compliance with the Mobile Home Park cleanup and removal of those trailers.
Thank you. Mr. Gillan, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, from my perspective, I have removed three of the trailers. That took place on July first. The fourth trailer is being removed today or tomorrow, maybe Thursday of this week, but I will be in compliance by August first. So, you know, as far as the legal timeline set forth by Ethan and Jerry, you know, I am in compliance. That being said, the financial costs, which I've laid out and provided to you, have been very substantial. I'm a small business owner and, you know, it, it's a very substantial cost. I've had to pay for it on my credit card, and if the Board of Supervisors approves my request, I would just simply pay off my credit card and we'd be done with the matter.
Thank you, sir. Do any of the board members have questions for Mr. Moore, Mr. Anderson, or Mr. Gillan?
I have no questions here. I would just like to affirm that I'm a former small business owner myself, and one of the great luxuries of being a small business owner is that you do get the ability to participate in our economy and, and take the risk to make money and the rewards of making money, but notice I said the risks of, of your business. And there are been times when I wrote out checks for paychecks to my employees and there was no money, money going into my account. And so I, I just find it unusual to come back to a government entity where you are under a court order, basically, and then an agreement from that court order, and to then say, hey, help me pay for this. Story County is only paid once before, and it wasn't to a mobile homeowner in this situation, it was to help move the tenants. So that is explanations about why I'm going to vote the way I'm going to vote.
Thank you for your feedback.
Supervisor Hens, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, and. I've read through all the information, I appreciate it getting votes from Mr. Gillan and from Jerry and the county attorney's office.
Mr. Gillan, glad to hear that you've got three of the trailers removed, and the fourth will be removed either next week or by the end of August for sure.
Can I make a comment?
Certainly.
Again, thank you very much for the opportunity to participate today, and I know, looking at your agenda, I know you have a thousand things and many items that are more important than, you know, the matter we're discussing now, so thank you for, you know, your particip, allowing me to participate. I am not a genius, but I can tell that, you know, you're probably not going to approve my request, and I understand that. That being said, I have, you know, since I was contacted by Story County P&amp;Z, going back three years, I, I think it was late, you know, fall two thousand seventeen, when I was contacted by planning and zoning regarding violations, I've somewhat scratched my head as to why this is even an issue, and I understand that prior to my ownership, the mobile home park was expanded illegally. And I also understand that I made a mistake in mid-two thousand seventeen, I've removed an old home, I brought in a new home, which essentially expanded, it was a larger mobile home than the one that was replaced, so it therefore expanded in non-conforming use. And, you know, for Jerry, that's, he's trying to do his job and execute on the, the strategic plan for Story County. Those are reasonable goals. At the end of the day, you know, we had a legal disagreement, if you will. You know, Ethan prevailed, Jerry prevailed, I lost. I guess my question is, how is the public interest served in this, in the sense that at the end of the day, you know, three years ago, it was a forty-space mobile home park that provided affordable housing to, you know, working families? And I would imagine that it's, you know, you, you need a lot of affordable housing because you, you just hired RDG consultants to do an affordable housing study at a cost of sixty thousand dollars. Fast forward, you know, Jerry and Ethan have popped the champagne, they have achieved their victory, you know, they won, but the, the ultimate loser, if you will, is, you know, working families of Story County, because now we have a thirty-four space mobile home park, there's, there's six families that can't live in a clean, safe, working environment, they're either paying very expensive rent in an apartment, or they're driving in from another city. So I, I guess, I, I don't, I, I would urge you to, you know, humbly urge you to reevaluate your, your, your policy towards Hickory Grove Court or, you know, mobile home parks in general, because they, they serve a purpose. I, I think we do a good job, we play by the rules with, you know, that one exception. And at the end of the day, you know, working families of Story County have, you know, are the losers. So that's, that's my comment.
Mr. Gillan, well, thank you for your comment. What we have in front of us right now is specifically the financial request, so, I'm sorry, supervisor Hens, did you just?
No, I was just going to make, I think it's kind of a similar comment to what you're making.
What we're, what we're, and, and I think the job of government is to look at an issue from various angles, and that's what we've done. So thank you for your comments. I'm going to ask the board, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I, I make the motion that we deny the financial request from here, Mr. Gillan.
I will second.
Any further discussion?
I would just like to point out that Jerry and Ethan did not win anything. Story County did, and I think that's important. Thank you. That's my comment.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, Hens?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Motion carried, thank you. We will head on then to consideration of amendments to the strategic plan, Leanne.
I can't say good morning again.
That's right.
So what is before you, you've seen through a redlined strikeout perspective, this is a cleanup and design PDF version, just some changes from what you did see, though, on page one, we added a mission statement at the top. If you'll see in bold. We did discuss adding it, you just have not seen it in. And then, as I was preparing for this morning's meeting, I did note on page fourteen, we missed a red font, a letter in red, we'll get that cleaned up as well. So the next steps, if approved today, we'll replace it online, and then revise posters around the wall as necessary, and add the mission statement to those posters, and then do some sharing with department heads and elected officials, and then take the next steps forward. But this is that, that final step of the work you've done this spring. Other questions for me?
No, no, I don't have any questions.
I'd just like to say once again, this is where you excel, Leanne, keeping all of this kept up to date, putting it in order, keeping, you know, thank you, this is great. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the amendments to the strategic plan as presented?
I would still move, second.
Further discussion? Not Olson?
Aye.
Hens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Strategic plan amendments are adopted, and I'll look forward to seeing the next steps, particularly on some of the things that we moved up to higher priority. It's good plan, but that's the first step of setting the plan, so. Department reports, we have none, other reports we have none, upcoming agenda items, is there anything either of the supervisors want to comment on for upcoming agendas?
I don't press the schedule time.
I don't either.
Okay, then we'll go on to public forum number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda, the board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. I will open public forum number two, and if there is anybody who has a comment, we don't have very many people on right now, so you could just unmute yourself if you have a comment. Now close public forum number two, we'll go on to raise on assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from supervisors. And supervisor Hens, do you want to?
Sure, sure. I guess I'll just say that I have on my calendar the CMT meeting tomorrow, and then the ICA P&amp;Z webinar that I'm going to partake in tomorrow afternoon. Thursday, I do have another webinar, CICS is going to be a meeting Thursday afternoon. We, we were unable to meet last Thursday because of an error in posting, public, public notice posting, so we didn't have a meeting last Thursday, so we moved into this particular Thursday. I also have the jurisdictional call on my calendar for Thursday evening. I'm just going to go ahead and just, Monday, I have on my calendar the, what's it called, the virtual fly-in, I believe it was with Senator Grassley, webinar, and then Tuesday, just so folks know that the Board of Health will have their meeting Tuesday afternoon. I know we have a Board of Supervisors meeting, but folks that are listening, if they have anything that they want to listen to, or if it's related to the Board of Health, they do have a meeting on Tuesday.
So I have a couple, a couple of those meetings that Elise mentioned, and then I think the most significant meeting for me this week is this afternoon, Story County Housing Trust Fund, and I'm excited in that we put out an RFP for the next round of funding for owner occupied repairs, and we've had three of our Story County communities apply, Story City asked for forty thousand dollars, Zirin asked for forty, or vice versa, all right, and Collins has asked for fifty thousand, and, and so these are going out at about eight thousand to ten thousand apiece for significant repairs, and a church that a former Huxley mayor is associated with, he, they are continuing to do this work, and they're going to focus on helping people with septic, specifically septic system repairs and upgrades, and focusing on the southwest part of the county, so Slater, Cambridge, but out in the outlying areas too, okay? And that's exciting, seventy thousand dollars, and so I guess Barbara James doesn't appear to be on, but I'll give her a little heads up as soon as we formally vote on that, I don't anticipate a problem. But that's exciting, because that's all money from the Story County Housing Trust Fund we give a match to, the C of A's gives a match to, some other entities, you know, we pulled out Porta One, and that's going to go all into the unincorporated areas for this next round, as far as we know. Thank you. Oh, no, so let me rephrase, not unincorporated areas, will go out to the smaller communities most likely. Sorry, I caught myself, thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, I've got several meetings, I think this afternoon, healthy hometown Nevada, a test for our Story County Task Force, we're making progress, I'll know more after this afternoon. Also, there's been some discussion about the headwaters of the South Scum Watershed Management Authority, we're looking at, it was formed by twenty-eighty a couple of years ago, but there hasn't been money or technical assistance to get that WMA formed, we're talking about trying to look at that again, see if we can get something done. ISAC, Iowa State Association of Counties is having legislative webinar tomorrow, which I hope to sit in on. We, of course, have the CCMT meeting, we will not have a special board meeting this Friday that I know of, does anybody have any agenda items? Not take it off the calendar right now, then. We may have one next week, though, because, because of the Board of Health meeting, we don't know if they're going to have any recommendations for us or not, but we might have a special board meeting following Friday, and, see what else are there. Also, the Chamber virtual fly-in, the Grassley meeting, and an Ernst meeting next week. So that looks like, that looks like it. So any other updates, any other announcements from the supervisors? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Still move, second.
Hens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. You're adjourned, thank you very much.